Thank you, Paul. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Will you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the meeting's over. You can go home. No, just joking, just joking. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the July 2021 meeting of the Town of Kent Planning Board. I ask you, when you come forward to speak, please identify yourself for the record. Gentlemen, have you all read the minutes from last month's meeting?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Can I get a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
I'll second it.
And Hugo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Giancarlo?
Aye.
Aye.
Simon?
I vote aye also.
It passes. Is there anyone here from Clearpool Management?
Hi.
Everyone in person.
If you could give us a brief rundown of why you're here.
Absolutely.
Please.
So my name is Jamie Lojoudis from Inside Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture. Glad I could be the guinea pig for that one. So again, my name is Jamie Lojoudis from Inside Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture. I'm here on behalf of the Clearpool Education Center, an affiliate of Green Chimneys. Also present is Greg Garcia, Capital Project Operator. Thank you. The project is located on Clearpool Road off of East Boyd's Road in the R80 zone. It's on a 43.74 acre parcel where the Clearpool Education Center is. The site itself is just along, as you first pull onto Clearpool Road, it is on the left-hand side, so it is just south of the actual campus itself. So just off of the main Clearpool Road is the area in question. So we have shown a soils and steep slopes map, which indicates the soils on site and our limits of disturbance, which we are disturbing 5,800 square feet of 15% to 25% slopes and 2,800 square feet of 25-plus slopes. And I hope this clarifies some questions that had come up in some of the comment memos that we had received. But the applicant would like to construct a 30-by-40 maintenance building on the site with a salt shed, and then we have also a compactor on a concrete pad. The gray shows the gravel access off of an existing curb cut, and then an outside storage area that will also be in gravel. I would like to point out, we discussed the steep slopes, so I would like to point out that the project area in question, again, is only 0.7 acres of disturbance, so we're under the acre threshold for DEC. We are located over 450 feet from the nearest stream that is to the west of the project. And then we are also 150, I'm sorry, 1,500 feet away from the Clearpool Lake. That lake is also 200 feet higher in elevation from the project area. We are located adjacent to the Niem Mountain Fire Observation Tower. That's also 4,000 feet away. That was a trigger from Shippo, so that was one of the questions on the EAF that I think Bruce talked about in his memo. And then also, there were some archeological-sensitive areas that were called up on that Chris website that are over 2,000 feet away. So the project itself, again, is for a steep slopes and erosion control permit. It's under the 5,000 square foot, over the 5,000 square foot acres. That's why we're here for that erosion control permit. And we think this is a type-two action under Seeker, so there's not a, it's not a major project by any means, so we respectfully request that this be done as an administrative review with the consultants after tonight.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, gentlemen? John or Liz?
This is my first time here, so for the record, my name is...
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is John Andrews. I am with the firm of Rhodey Soikin Andrews, who serve as consultants to the planning board. Typically, you're used to seeing the far more attractive Julie Mangorillo, who is still home enjoying motherhood and probably will be until September, so. She's asked for, and I think I've kind of been persuaded to give her the summer off. So at least through September, you'll see me. I also have the pleasure this evening of being Mr. Bruce Barber, who, as you know, is unusually absent. He is somewhere in transit between here and Florida, weather-dependent. You should have a memo from each of us. I will not bore you with the details, but I think there are a couple of issues that stand out. I will go first to Bruce's memo. I think he is willing to concede that this is, in fact, a type-two action. He needs to conduct a site inspection to verify that there's no wetlands. We don't have any information regarding tree clearing, but if my notes and my review of the overheads, the aerial photographs, this is pretty much a disturbed area. What she did not mention, there were two houses on this site that are, or have been, demolished. And they're actually building the new structure on the footprint of one, and the salt shed is partially on the footprint of the other. I think the major concern that both Bruce and I have is there is a salt shed on the property. And the details of how that salt shed is to be used and what's surrounding it. Typically, you provide some type of impervious surface area to handle spillage and other inadvertent salt discharges, so they don't leach into the ground or get conveyed to groundwater. And I think that exists in both our memos. That's an issue that we would like to see resolved going forward. You will need an erosion control permit. Most of our other comments are kind of like boilerplate and, you know, kind of dotting the i's and crossing the t's. The applicant has also raised a couple issues in their documentation. The first is, this would typically require a public hearing. I am unfamiliar with your procedures here. It's not a single-family home. It's not a residential. It's a campsite, but it's in a previously disturbed area. As I said, two buildings have been removed.
But a change of use.
It is, arguably, it is. What they actually have is maintenance facilities scattered throughout the site, so what they're doing is putting them in one location.
Yeah.
And, but your code allows the planning board to consider waiving the public hearing upon a recommendation from me, which I'm not yet prepared to do, but also upon a finding that the proposed activities of minor nature would not significantly alter effect or endanger steep slopes or result in uncontrolled and excessive erosion. For the most part, those findings are easily made. They're pretty much reusing the same area. There are a little bit of clearing, perhaps, protecting the septic system, they're doing a few other things. But we have no position, we leave it up to your discretion as to whether you believe a public hearing is appropriate or not.
But you haven't sided on that yet.
Well, he hasn't.
What's that?
You haven't reached any conclusions about it.
I'm unfamiliar with your procedures, but reading your code and strict compliance, my recommendation was unless this was a controversial project, which I see nothing in the record, would suggest that, my recommendation would be to go ahead and take, make a motion to waive the public hearing.
And we've just been taking the opposite stance when it comes to this. We've always been siding on letting the public come in, least voicing their concerns, because we don't know all the view shed, everything else during a certain time of the year. Some guy could be on top of the mountain and say, "I'm going to see this thing."
And for that reason, sir, not understanding your history, please forgive me.
Oh, no.
I can go either way, but in...
Pretty much, DUC land, surrounded by DUC land.
But there's a lot of residential up that way, too.
Actually, I think this site is, where this is located, the little postage stamp that this is on, is completely incorporated within the lands of Clearpool. So it's, they surround it on all four sides, if you will. It's kind of halfway up the mountain. Nobody, there's nobody close to it, if you will.
Okay.
So on that basis, again, my typical recommendation is to err on the side of conservatism and allow the public to speak, because sometimes somebody raises something we never expected, which is not a bad thing.
You can slow it down a little.
It's just going to give it one more month.
All right.
And then the other matter that they asked for is to move it ahead administratively. I think it's a little premature to do that. You haven't made a decision whether you want a public hearing or not. And there's still some information and some issues that Bruce and I need to have resolved, albeit minor. But if we can get the information resolved and perhaps get the salt sheds squared away, I might be comfortable with recommending administratively at that point, but I think it's a little premature at this point.
And on that standpoint, would it be better to have a public hearing? Because then we could at least set the public hearing, get it out to the public while you guys are doing the rest of your documentation anyways.
I mean, we'd prefer to not have a public hearing.
Of course. Yeah, we understand for reasons, yes.
To not have to, you know, notice and deal with that.
But it could be pretty benign.
True. Can you give me a moment to deal with that?
Yep. But other than that, I mean, the application was fairly complete. You know, it's got the little technical nuts and bolts that need to be resolved, but I don't think, when we discussed it at a consultant's meeting, I don't think Bruce and I had any real big issues here, especially since, like I said, it's really a redevelopment proposal, knocking down two and replacing with one in one small structure.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Liz, do you have anything you want to add?
I don't normally review...
Identify yourself.
Oh, of course. My name is Liz Axelson. I'm a planner, the planning consultant to the planning board from CPL. So I don't normally look at the sedimentation and erosion control and steep slope applications. But just regarding the discussion of public hearing, I suggest you set it for next month. Have it, close it, and if everything is in good order, as John says, so. And also, I didn't know, John, this was your first meeting. Welcome aboard, in person.
Do you have anything to add?
So on that note, we would respectfully request to not have a public hearing, in that the requirement is 500 feet. This is something where we're not going to be visible from the majority of anywhere, since we're in a previously disturbed area surrounded by vegetation and trees. And I believe the nearest, the nearest residence is down the hill at the entrance of Clearpool Road. So that is, that is our stance. We respectfully request a waiver.
Great, thank you. Gentlemen, should we vote on a public hearing right now?
I like to do it to make sure your application goes further. I just don't want to hold you back. I don't want to go next month, and then all of a sudden we get all your documentation, and then it determines that we have to send a public hearing. Then you're lost another month. I don't want you to lose a month.
That's understood, but I think it's the applicant's...
If you want to take on that risk and not request a public hearing at this point, and wait till next month to see if we set one.
I mean, if, if, say, we set a public hearing, and then you determine you don't need one, we're still basically having a public hearing, you know?
Well, it opens and closes. We would always open and close it.
Which still would provide the public...
Still give the public a chance to open it.
I mean, I'm always in the favor of, you know, trying to waive as much as possible.
Oh, yeah.
But in this case, I feel like it's just going to open and close, and you won't even have to worry about it. We set it up for next month.
Yeah, it's not going to delay anything.
It's going to...
And that way, it won't change precedence. So if we say, if we change precedence for this one, then we'll have to justify it going forward to other applicants.
I wouldn't say we're changing precedence. I mean, you'd be waiving based on the materials that we've submitted and your review of this.
Oh, I know, but somebody else can say that they, because of the materials that were presented for it, this is why I need to be waived for my project, so.
Again, I don't think it's setting precedent, but...
Okay.
I feel like it's kind of covering them.
Yeah, it does.
It does.
Let's hold on.
Okay.
Hugo, yes or no?
Well...
Setting the meet-public hearing next month?
For next month.
Yes.
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 You're going to do that?
So do you concur? We set it?
Do I have a choice?
It's the expedite.
No, it's expedite. It's to help you, yes.
It's to help you more than hurt you.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, you voted on it, so I think that's kind of setting it.
Yes, we didn't set it. We just voted that we should have one.
Just for clarification, I think, having listened to the board's vote, what you were suggesting is that you would hold a public hearing next week?
Next month.
Next month, excuse me, next month. Forgive me. Next month, and provided all the details are worked out, it would be a de minimis, and you're expecting our recommendation to be to move to administrative. So it would be a rather quick turnaround.
Right, they're coming back next month anyway.
Yep. I know she's frowning, and I'm sorry, but, but yes. Now that I understand it, I take no exception to that, and I think that's a good compromise.
If there are no comments from the public, it'll be very quick.
It's true.
You might have one dear that complains.
Yes.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Okay.
All right.
You have any other questions for us?
I do not have any other questions, as I'm looking at the back of my math here. Realizing it'll show you what the building's going to look like. So this is the maintenance building with a copy of the salt shed, so I do apologize. This was intended to be provided to you in this mission packet. It slips through the cracks. But it is, again, a 30-by-40 building, and it is going to be green in color with a silver roof, so it'll be pretty blended with the surrounding area. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Is there anyone here representing Vitello? Please come up.
I'm Eric Scholom of Inside Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture. Also here is Carol Kurth, the project architect, tonight representing the Vitello residence. The project had received approval for a new garage and house addition back in the fall. We had been before the board in spring with proposing to shift the garage back approximately 10 feet into the hill from the approved location. Since then, we have obviously met with the Vitellos, and they have determined a preferred spot for the garage. Looking at the plan, the approved location of the garage is here where I'm circling with the pen. Shifted just under 100 feet along the driveway. The area is kind of a nice natural area with a few rock outcroppings kind of around the, where around the garage will be. So the idea is to kind of make it fit with the rocks and keep the exposed rocks in there to make it look a very natural and nice setting. The shift has obviously shifted the limits of disturbance, but we've been able to keep them virtually the same, stay under the acre threshold for the DEC, any required DEC permanent stormwater. There is a slight increase in total number of trees that would be removed. There would be three additional trees removed. However, what we have been able to do with the shift is, the garage was previously approximately 25%, sorry, about 50% in slopes, 25% or greater. The new location is pretty much 90% in the 15% to 25% range, so we've been able to decrease the amount of disturbance on slopes 25% or greater. We've also been able to reduce the total cut to the finished floor by having it in a area of less slope, so that we're able to kind of reduce the total depth of the earthwork. So we think these have, this location is certainly an improved location just from a total impacts standpoint. As we did have previous approval, we are hoping at this point to, we did get, received some comments from John Andrews, the consulting engineer, and we obviously will have to address those, but we'd ask that after tonight that you'd be able to address those administratively with consultants.
Great, thank you. Gentlemen, questions?
The only thing I have, this is the house that we put the requirements on it. They couldn't put an Airbnb, they couldn't utilize the space for Airbnb, because they had a three-bedroom above it, correct?
Right.
There's a three-bedroom above this garage that's being proposed, and I think one of the stipulations was that we...
Yeah, it's for cable.
No, I know that, but I just want to make sure that the public understands that this is not for commercial. They're not planning on renting this out, not going to impact their neighbors. It won't be an operation like that.
Yeah, I know, it's for cable.
Okay.
So there was one other thing that I know in the comment memo, it said that some of the construction had started at this point. The construction has not started, just to clarify.
No tree removal, nothing?
There was one tree, right? No troublemaker?
The troublemaker tree?
You were going to remove one tree at the time, but no, right? There was one tree you were removing. Was it...
Right.
I think we ended up with that...
You need to identify yourself, sir.
We, can you hear me? We ended up with that...
No, you need to identify yourself.
Say your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Carol Kurth, architect for the project. Hi, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Thought you introduced. At the time we got the shift approval, it was just literally days before the moratorium on the tree clearing took place. So we did not do the work. And basically, this is an evolution. As, you know, the part of the reason for that shift when we came before year before was because we had done some renderings, and the garage was very much in the view shed of the great room, the family room, where they're going to be spending most of their time. And as spring came and the lawn looked lush and everything looked really beautiful, it was thought like, why don't we re-explore? We had proposed this many moons ago, this idea of putting the garage right along the driveway in this flat spot. It just was such a natural place. And as they saw the foliage coming out and everything else, we were like, you know what? Maybe we ought to rethink this and take another look. So that's why we're here.
I have one question, sorry. In front of it now, because where it was before, it was coming off the existing driveway. Now you have...
It's, so you have...
No, up at the very top, you had to come on off of it, if I remember right. But now what you have is you have, is that blacktop in front of it?
Yes, that would be blacktop. Yes, that area would be blacktop. Basically, there's a flat area here right off the existing driveway that just always seemed like a great spot to sort of pull off and do the garage. And they've now come to agree that that really is a better way to do this. Before, they really wanted the garage as close as possible to the house, the convenience and so on, but as we've walked it together, client and I, they realized, you know, for an extra few steps, it's just better. It's a more sensitive location.
Thank you. John, you have something to add?
Again, for the record, my name is John Andrews. I serve as the engineer to the planning board. Just to recap on what these folks have said, this matter was last before the planning board, at your regularly scheduled meeting in March. At that time, they were just moving the garage, as they indicated, just that 10-foot back into the bank. There was discussions on it, and the board actually at that time placed the matter on it administrative track, asking that they address our comments in a memo dated that date. But there was also some information some of the members of the board had asked for. They were, Bruce Barber had asked for some specific information regarding updating all the disturbance information, making sure everything was consistent. One of the board members, I think it was Dennis, had requested that perhaps they would consider a reduction in parking in front of the garage and maybe using some pavers. There was a minor adjustment that we all kind of decided to live with, with the septic tank. They were going to shift it or adjust the driveway around it, so there was no motion. Excuse me, and there was, because of the steep nature of the bank, there was some discussion about the inclusion of erosion control blankets at the rear of the building. In making their submittal, they kind of addressed those questions, but the practicality is, it's not in the same spot, so it's a different project. And I was not involved in the original project, so I did reach out and I did go through Julie's file. And as these folks have said, this is not the first time this has popped up. This was submitted before they made the last submission, and I think some of the discussions where Julie had significant concerns in that it's, it's outside the limits of the previous limits of disturbance. They were pretty close to, I think, eight, little under nine tenths of an acre. And this is a big jump outside of it, but they now say they're back underneath that nine-tenths. I can't rationalize that, so that's one of my comments. I'd like to see how they've done their math. They're removing more trees. I think the number I heard today was three. I couldn't see how many were underneath on my plan set, so I can't answer that. And I know they're nestled between some rock knobs, but I'm not sure whether it doesn't increase the impact on rock. I don't know. It's not clear. So my request is to prepare a more detailed analysis of the changes and justify what they're saying. Give us the numbers. Is it that way? And again, in this case, they're not just moving the septic tank, they're moving the whole building. So they got to modify the wastewater disposal system. We just need a clarification from Putnam County that they're okay with that. They approved it one way, we need an approval now. There's, shown on the drawings, a utility connection. I guess they were going to supply the new garage with electric telephone and something, maybe cable, out of the existing house. That line's still shown, but it goes nowhere, and there's nothing going to the new house. So I don't know whether they're going to do the same thing, or whether they're bringing new service in underground. If you're going to do the same thing, it needs to be shown on the drawings. And I defer to the planning board. You had asked last time as justification for the major move. You're going to have to accept yourself what the justification for this greater move is, and I'll defer that to you. Bruce has been involved. He's had some comments. He's not here now. He did not issue a comment memo on this, but he may have to weigh in, particularly since there's some additional tree removal. And with regards to it administrative track, again, I'm going to defer to you folks. I have no problem doing that, but you folks need to be satisfied that you've got all the information you need, because this isn't a 10-foot move or a 12-foot move. This is down the road.
It seems like there's still a lot for us to learn here.
That would be my position, and again, I think it's one of those things that we fill in these gaps. I'd be in a much better position to make that recommendation to you at the next meeting.
Thank you, John. Liz, do you have anything? Gentlemen, how do you feel?
Well, they need to definitely get a review memo from, we definitely need to get a review memo from Bruce.
a review memo from Bruce, because we are changing where the steep slopes, where they're going, what impacts there are. So we definitely need to get a revised memo from them and then like see all their calculations as well, so.
Also, we need better detailed drawings as well, because there's very little information on the new parking areas and everything. So we'd need a little bit better...
I'm not sure if a public hearing is going to be needed for this, for the change, because it's still the same building, it just moved.
Wait till we get better...
Yeah, it's less impacted the environment, that's why I want Bruce to weigh in and make sure and confirm that.
It's chipping less rock here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but you, it was sitting on the, that's what I'm saying, where the blacktop is up beside your house, it was coming off of it before, now it's additional piece being put onto it. So what I'm saying is like, there's very limited information on what square footage or anything down there. So I guess the limited disturbance we need to look at.
We reduced the amount of courtyard paved parking area up at the top, and instead there's more parking area than before.
All right, so that's what I'm saying, is we need to be able to see this.
Yeah.
You know, that's...
Well, it is shown on the plan. Obviously, we do show the existing driveway underneath, and we do show what was the approved limits of disturbance and the proposed limits of disturbance are both shown on the plan to show comparison. And obviously, this area back here where the garage was going to be is no longer being disturbed because the garage isn't going in there anymore. And as I discussed before, that the area where the garage was, was 50 percent sloped over 25 percent. We are now in an area that is only 10 percent over 25 percent. So the disturbance on the steep slopes above 25 percent has been reduced with this change. The overall cut to the finished floor again was reduced so that we would anticipate less, you know, less hammering, less soil movement. So in this area, I think, you know, it is reduced impact.
Any other questions?
Yeah, we just didn't, we just didn't see that, you know, being able to quantify that. So everything you're mentioning to us, all these changes in grading and difference, but we're looking for something that's quantifying these changes. Why, you know, just reading your review memo doesn't have anything that quantifies it. There's no, there's no data associated with this.
Okay, but I know we haven't exceeded any new thresholds. We've basically matched what the approved plan was from disturbance and everything. So I think, you know, it's not a significant change.
I don't have enough information to agree or disagree, but if you do a quick overlay, which I did, and put the old plan over this plan, there's an awful lot of little areas, and I think what would be helpful is if they took what they have been saying, which I have no reason to disbelieve, and put it in a chart and said, previous disturbance was .89, new disturbance is .93. Previous impervious paving was 0.5, it's now 0.52, 0.4, I don't know. But when you start to look at some of the changes that, and you incorporate them and draw one over the other, yeah, they changed things and they've situated around, but the areas get to be very close. So alls I'm asking for, and I think it would add a lot of clarity, is just a side-by-side comparison. And as long as it bears out what they say, which I suspect it will, there's no issue. Yep, no, I fully concur. So that's exactly what I'm, that's exactly what I'm looking for. Just show me what you're planning on doing, what the changes are, net, positive, negative, just let us know.
Easy enough to make a chart.
It's just very simple, yeah. You just drop right onto the drawing, changes. Or even drop it in the memo.
So we're not going to take any action tonight. Do you have any further questions for us or the consultants?
We do have some renderings of the building.
But if you'd like, we had done a rendering prepared of, this was the previous with the garage structure up at the top near the house, and this is the approach where that would be tucked away as you drive up.
This is the new one?
This is the new one. So you can see, you know, you're coming up the driveway and because of the grade and the height, you know, the garage building was very close and was just seeming, we'll show you another view from the inside here. If you look down here, this is the view from the family room, even with the 10-foot moved, it was still pretty obvious. And then this is now from the family room, you can barely see the garage when it's down.
It's much better.
Much better, right?
Yeah, definitely.
So that's the reason we're here.
Yep.
We get it, for sure.
So we can easily give you a little chart.
Please.
It will bear out, you know...
Yeah, and some of the engineering calculations that Mr. Andrews is...
We'll get the calculations, it's not a problem. I mean, I can understand that you want to make sure that that works.
Yes.
If there are any other questions?
You are? Do you have any further questions for us? Gentlemen, anything?
No, nothing.
No.
You're done here?
Yep. So we have to be working with the consultants and working with, so working with Bruce and working with Mr. Andrews about working with, getting all the information that they need, getting it over to us back as a submittal. That way we can review it and maybe put you back onto administrative track.
Great. So we've got like two weeks from now to put this together for a submit to be on for all of us?
I think so, yeah. Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, it'll be July 15.
July 15, that's the next...
It's pushing right. That's next Thursday.
Okay.
Well, do your best. We've always accepted things coming in a few days late. So we've never turned down an applicant because they didn't make the deadline, you know. We've always tried to do our best right down to the wire.
You know, as long as we have it by the 20th, because we have the consultants' review meeting, and they want to see it by then.
And that way you can touch base with them, get anything discussed before the next meeting and the next workshop, so that way...
Just to sort of circumbet this going along, then you need another site walk.
Right, microphone.
Just so that we could be expeditious, does anybody need another site walk? Would you like to actually see this, we flag this out on site?
The only person I would think would really do it would be Bruce. Yeah.
So we can let Bruce know it is flagged out there.
Okay.
And if he wants to come by, we can absolutely make that arrangement, because I think when he sees it, he'll be...
Yeah, he's going to want to look at the area, you know, the topography, and he wants to look at the, he wants to look at the trees and make sure.
Sure, of course.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone here from Friedman and Crossman Property?
Hi, James Hartford from River Architects in Cold Spring.
Thank you. If you give us like a brief rundown of why you're here.
Yes, great. So the Friedman and Crossman family has asked us to design a new home for them to replace the existing house on China Pond Road. And our goal is to replace it with an energy-efficient passive house, so a building that uses up to 90 percent less energy than conventional construction before we add solar. And there will be no fossil fuels used on site. In order to do this, we're going to design the house with a very efficient building envelope and basically use heat pumps for heating and cooling, and so very kind of small systems.
Now, you're going to use air-to-air heat pumps or geothermal?
Air-to-air heat pumps. And so this is something that our firm is, we specialize in, we do all of our work in this area. And we're excited to bring this to Kent, because this would be the first passive house here. And so Carl's going to walk through the plans over here, but essentially, we're taking the existing house, started off as a little, you know, bungalow and was added on to many times over the years. And it's a very irregular-shaped house and the flow is pretty bad, foundations step and are pretty, you know, dysfunctional, and there's a lot of water issues in the basement space. So the idea is to take the existing house down and build on essentially the same footprint, not the same floor plan, but exactly superimposed on the original. It'll be a bit larger, but still the three bedrooms. The intent is also to use the existing septic tank for the request of the board during our Zoom meeting workshops. We'll be replacing the existing 750-gallon tank, or 500-gallon tank, I don't remember, with a 1,000-gallon tank. And the, there's an, we are working with the same driveway, the approach is exactly the same, but we're, intent is also to add a garage with an office space above that. And that's just off the existing driveway. So we're trying to keep the area of disturbance as small as possible. We just recently received the comments back from Cornerstone Associates, just got them today. So there are some things in here that were not brought up in the previous workshops, which we are working to address. Actually, quite a lot of these things were discussed in the workshops, including the question of whether, why is there a shower in the office space? It was actually suggested by your advisors to, that a shower is permissible, and we're requested not to put a note on there that we're not including a kitchen in the space. So that's what we've done. It's purely for the use, home office, and it's not for rental at all, so.
Anything else? So to address a few of the comments that were given by the consultants previously, in terms of a wetlands permit, the consultants identified that the 750-foot topographic contour would be our wetlands boundary. We have shown that on our updated site plans, as well as our erosion control plan, and we are still well outside of the 100-foot buffer zone of that, so we should not require a wetlands permit. So we're here just applying for the, sorry, the erosion and sediment control plan. Additionally, in Bruce Barber's comments here, he had identified that we are in a wildlife bat recovery zone regarding cutting trees. I have previously gone on to the DEC's resource mapper and shown that our site is outside of those boundaries, so it should not affect us. But should it be important, we don't intend to cut any trees within the time range that is not allowable without a parent, so we shouldn't have any issue with that. Additionally...
And that map you have is from U.S. Fish and Wildlife?
I'm sorry?
That map you have is from U.S. Fish and Wildlife?
So the U.S. Fish and Wildlife resource or website refers you to the DEC resource mapper. So these maps were pulled from the DEC website, which is supposed to support that.
Yeah, it's just because they have the authority to grant the waivers, we can't.
Sure. We're not looking for a waiver.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Additionally, since our last meeting, we have now provided our erosion and sediment control plan, so it's included in your packet. And our, the only things that have primarily changed there are the amount of land disturbance that we've shown. That's been updated appropriately, which it has increased, but should not have any additional adverse effect or change the approach that we are taking with the project. We have included those updated items, as well as some of the additional documents that were requested by Bruce Barber. I've provided cut sheets for battery backup, which is intended for the project. We've also included the deed survey, which was requested. And we've also identified in our updated survey that the, there was a question about the portion of the driveway that is not on our property. That's identified as a China Road right-of-way. So that's identified on our updated survey as well.
That's a, that's a piece of property that's owned by the China Pond Association, and that right-of-way continues beyond and could be linked up as a roadway if the association chooses to do so. So it's part of the private road system of China Pond.
And how many battery packs are we planning on putting in? Just like one Tesla wall battery pack, or are you planning on doing...
We'll probably do multiple. We haven't sized that out yet. That'll be based on the load. But the intent is that we, there will be solar on the house, and since it will be all-electric, we, the intent is to use battery as the backup rather than using, again, fossil fuels and a generator. We're trying to skip that entirely. We've done that successfully in other projects similarly sized.
And this is outside of our comments? Just make sure you're not having any major hydrogen buildup or anything like that.
I'm sorry?
Hydrogen buildup, so when you're stacking a whole bunch of batteries together and a battery wall, you might have to look at some kind of hydrogen evacuation ventilation exhaust fan, muffin fan, something like that. Just when you start stacking these things up, it becomes more than just putting one battery pack on a wall.
Yeah.
So it grows fast.
Yeah.
Then NFPA starts supplying much, you know, much further, and once you start building, you know, battery storage than just small storage battery cells on your house.
That's up. Okay? We'll do.
All right, thank you. Gentlemen, any questions? John?
John Andrews, engineer to the planning board. I'm also doubling as Bruce's second this evening again on this application.
John, you only have to do it once.
Hmm? You have memos from Bruce and myself. The gentlemen are correct, they made a resubmittal. I did not receive that resubmittal until today at around 11 o'clock, so my memo addresses what they had previously submitted, as I think in fact does Bruce's. So there's a lag in here somehow, and I don't know how it happened, but it did. I think, in, just I took a cursory look, they kind of gave us the basics, whether the details are there or not. So what you should do is read Bruce's email, or memo, and my memo, that's kind of like a boilerplate. We will proceed to review the new material. I suspect a lot of it will go away, but until we review it, I can't, I can't say for certain. I think Bruce's major concern, we both walked the site, I'm not surprised if the limits of disturbance went up, based on what they're doing. They are proposing some stormwater management facilities. We're going to have to see how they work. They did notice, they did adjust the wetland boundaries according to Bruce's recommendation. And it does appear as though they are outside of those and may not need a permit, but again, I defer to Bruce. The tree issue, I will defer to Bruce. He's looking for some floodplain information. I did my own research, I find none, they're not inside the floodplain, they're well above it, there's no impacts, they're not proposing any development. So I'm not sure where Bruce is going with that, but for the most part, my memo is also boilerplate. They will need an erosion and sediment control plan, and basically, we'll need a formal determination on the wetlands. And since the, at the time I conducted my review, we didn't have all the information, I can't give you much guidance until we review what we've got. And again, I did look at it this morning, and it, they kind of hit the basics, so whether it needs to be fine-tuned or not, I don't know. But I do have an erosion sediment control plan, I do have an updated survey, I do have a clarification on the deed, I do have some other issues. Oh, going on backup generator.
It'll kick on in a few, but I may have to reset the live feed.
There we go. Take a second.
The camera's on, that's okay.
It's because we're talking about batteries.
Yes, eh? We want battery backup.
You guys are in trouble now.
So as a consequence, I have nothing further to say, but we'll review it for next meeting and advise you accordingly. Okay, perfect.
Thank you, John. Liz? Liz?
Again, Liz Axelson, CPL, I'm the planning consultant of the planning board. Okay. And just, just a quick point, I didn't review this one, but as a matter of course, Bruce and John, and formerly Julie, and I have always asked for the bat clearing notes, and most of my other municipalities do that too, just as a matter of course, whether it's possibly on the site or not, even though I do appreciate you looking it up, so.
Thank you, Liz. So we won't be able to take any action tonight. Do you have any further questions for us or the consultants?
No, well, we've, you know, we look forward, sure. I, yeah, I don't think we do. I mean, it's, we've done what we could to complete the, the information requested. Our, our civil engineer has completed the erosion control plan, so hopefully that's to our satisfaction.
Can we have your SWIP?
That was also, we only received that today, so that was a bit late, late coming in. So, so we look forward to coordinating with you on that.
And the next steps will, they'll, they'll be reviewing what's been submitted, and they'll issue memos right back out again.
Great.
Okay.
Excellent. So is there any indication on when we can be moving this forward to a public hearing?
Potential, I mean, if you got, if you, if you guys get everything together, it's going to take probably, I would say probably at least two months. Because by the time they get you to review, by the time you get the submittals, they got time to review it, they kick it back over to us, then we're going to have to set a public hearing. So if that's, if everything is together, but that's not even you responding to their comments, it might not be sufficient at that point. The best thing to do is start talking to the consultants.
Is there any way, and this is all with, with all due respect, is there any way that we can get comments sooner than the day of the, the meeting? It's, it's impossible to respond to comments thoroughly in a timely manner in that way. And I, and I realize that the same, you know, comment can be made that our engineer...
It goes, it goes both ways. So, yeah, but, yeah, we always, they're always expediting, they're always working through it. It only take a few weeks usually, you know, to turn around everything, so. But, yeah, just make sure you talk to them, come to the consultants' meeting.
Right, there's a meeting at the end of the month.
Yeah, there's a meeting at the end of the month, you can meet with them, you can discuss with them, they'll probably have their comments at that point if you guys have everything. You know, there's potential.
We'll be there.
Great. It's all potential.
It's, it's up to the board what I, I understand. Who I, my voice, my parents, my...
Actually, it does, yes.
It's, it's, it's the pleasure of the board, but to be blunt, I can't get a submittal at 11 o'clock on the day of the meeting.
No, of course. We fully, no. No, no, we're talking about next, we're talking next month, yeah.
Next month, if you want me to, typically, we would wait until after the 15th. We'd wait till the consultants' meeting, and then we would review it. If you'd like us to review it early and have some things, I can certainly do that, not a problem. If that's the pleasure of the board, I'll make sure we have our preliminary comments no later than the, the consultants' meeting at the end of the month.
And if that's the request of the applicant?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And we know you'll work as expeditiously as possible.
Yes.
But opening up the lines of communication with them is the best way to get all this wrapped up. That way you have, you know, you know what they're thinking, you know what they're requesting, and then that way we can get a public hearing set. And as soon as we get a public hearing set, then it's just going to the process.
Great. Communication, that's all.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here from JPE Auto? Oh, oh.
Just had a quick note with Vera, she suggests that they contact her to get on to the consultants' meeting on, on the 20th.
Yep. So contact Vera, shoot her an email, request to be on the agenda for the consultants' meeting.
All right. JPE Auto Repair, please.
Joseph Rena, the principal site design consultant, this evening representing Juan Pablo Barros Pani, the owner of JP Auto Repair. They're current, they are an established auto repair shop. They have a shop right now in Mayapac, looking to open a second location at 333 Route 52, which was formerly the Durant Equipment Rental Property. It's a property, it's 1.4 acres, it's zoned properly, and it requires a special use permit and site plan approval for a change in use. There, there are no expectations to make any modifications to the site itself, other than providing or identifying handicap parking spaces. The remainder of the site is intended to be left as-is. The building, they're going to clean up the building, move into the building. The only changes they're intending to make in the building itself is construct, or install rather, three-car lifts in the repair bays. If, if you are all familiar with the property, the approach to the bays are right at the front of the building, to the right of the bays is a, and I'll just get you the floor This is Route 52 here. These are the, the bay, the entry to the bays on the left side of the building. You've got a service reception area here, bathrooms, utility rooms, and office space. That's all existing. The only thing being proposed are the lifts. To the rear of the building, you have additional storage and utility room. Going back to the site plan, we've identified for the, just for the purpose of, of meeting the parking requirement for that zone, we've identified where there is potential for spaces there. We have, if you look at the property, of course, we could fit more than that, just, that's just to identify that there is parking, adequate parking to meet that requirement of the code.
It would be in the spot where all the rental equipment was, on the right.
Yeah, actually, if you look at an aerial photo, I mean, this, almost the entire site was covered with rental equipment at the time. So the application is really not complex. I think it's consistent with what's going on up and down in that area along Route 52. And the applicant is looking for the quickest path to get an approval. They're already leasing the property, they leased the property with, believing it was just a move-in, and found out that they need to get a special use permit. So we would ask the board to, to look at this and, and point this in the quickest, again, in the quickest path to achieving an approval.
Thank you, John.
John Andrews, engineer to the planning board, also Bruce Barber. You have a memorandum from each of us. I will go through mine first. As I understand it, it's a special use permit and site plan. Site plan because it's change in use, special use permit because it's an automobile repair shop in this particular zone. The site, the proposal is to use the site basically as-is, they're putting three lifts inside the building, nothing outside. They have shown an established pavement markings for two handicap parking spaces, so it's a relatively de minimis application. However, the submission, it is in the NY City, New York City DEP, East of Houston Watershed. There's no site disturbance, there's no soil removal, so there's no need for an erosion sediment control permit. The application that was submitted has a couple minor defects, the tax map number was incorrectly identified. JP Auto Corp, Repair Corp is the applicant, but they are not the owner. We need some authorization forms, we need a signature of the owner that allows JP to act on their behalf in the matter of this application. We do need a copy of the deed. The site plan and the survey indicates that the, there's a portion of the rear of the site that's used by an adjacent property owner. I don't have any details on that. The planning board may want some additional detail, I don't know what it's used for, looks like it's, portion of it's actually been paved. So there may be some additional information you may want, there may be some notes and limitations that you may want to put on there, that says if that goes any further at the rear of the property, somebody's got to come back and get a site plan approval for it. I defer to Bruce on wetland issues, I defer to Liz on planning and zoning matters. I did review the environmental remediation database. It does indicate that there was a closed-in-place, above-ground bulk petroleum storage tank on the site. Additionally, there are a number of monitoring wells and other features on the site for which there is no information. And one of those items is a, is a rather large metal storage tank. The, in the SEAF, item 20 should probably be checked, yes, and additional information provided. Maybe some explanatory details on those, on those facilities. The location and details of the existing water supply and wastewater disposals facilities should be indicated. We would like the location of all the doors to be shown on the site plan. It's, it's always a good idea to know how you're getting in and out of a building when you're, when you're considering a site plan. There are no provisions for refuse handling. And as indicated, they put two handicap parking spaces in, and I applaud that for that. Only one is actually needed for a site such as this. And based on the way the site plan lays out and looking at the aerial photograph, it appears the way those sites, those spaces are located, it impedes access to the gate that gives, that you have to enter to get to the rear of the property. So I would suggest that perhaps the engineer may need to adjust that, maybe reduce it to one and slide them a little bit, so you can get into that gated area at the back with a little better ease. There are some confusing line weights, particularly with respect to the edge of pavement and the existing, the existence of curbing. If one reads the lines carefully, it would suggest that there's curbing around the parking lot. If you look at the aerial photograph, it's not. So I, I think there's just, you look at the survey, it's a little confusing as well. And I think we just need some further information on future submittals. In terms of Bruce, the, the property is located in a jurisdictional check zone area for wetlands. Bruce probably needs to resolve that matter on your behalf. He makes some issues regarding the soils. It's kind of interesting, because apparently the wetland soils exist in the only paved portion of the site, just underneath the existing parking, so that's a matter Bruce is going to have to kind of deal with and reconcile with your code. Doesn't appear there's any trees to be removed. And he's got some similar concerns as I have regarding the monitoring wells and the DEC spill information, but other than that, it's really a quest for more information at this point.
And you said the only thing that's changing inside the buildings is they're adding three lifts?
That's all they're doing.
Okay. And has the floor been structurally evaluated for three lifts? I know that's not, I know that's not what you're looking in for, but, you know, that's what it comes down to.
There was no data submitted, I would suspect they have to submit that to the building inspector. But they look like they're floor-mounted hydraulic lifts, so...
I'm just making sure the floor is ready for it, they don't need plates.
Yep.
Well, they can always cut that open, but as long as it's not the ones that go down and the others, you're going to make a geysir there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have any details, they just... And it's outside of our area, but, you know, just, when you're adding things into existing, existing old buildings, you don't know what that pad is inside of there, you know.
Thank you, John. Liz, anything?
Yeah, but it didn't have a lift.
Liz Axelson, planner.
You did that.
Okay. Yeah, well, you know, the camera's right there, I just want to make sure. So a lot of my questions in the first part of my review have to do with, please tell us what this is and what it is not. And I think those will be easy to address with notation or explanation. There are a lot of regulations, supplemental regulations for this type of use, depending on what it is. And a lot of vehicular and auto repair service places have other services, so we just need to define those things and get them out of the way. Let's see, having to do with all the activities being inside of a building, most of the materials being inside of a building, whether or not there is gasoline or flammable liquids stored on the site. Again, I had a question about the large metal storage tank and the status of that, what is proposed, or has it been reclaimed or stabilized, et cetera. Confirm there are no gasoline pumps. Lubricating devices might be there, they just have to meet a setback. And then another question, is this oftentimes motor vehicle repair places will have a little sales or rental thing on the side, so we want to know whether that's happening or not. And then I took a close look at the access detail and the parking. I don't, there's a parking calculation on the plan, I don't think this use needs 39 spaces for customers, of course. In fact, they maybe only need, I don't know, five or six for customers. And I'm suggesting that those handicap spaces in the front be just kind of tucked behind the building, there's a row of eight parking spaces back there, and kind of clean things up so that you have access for customers coming in, and you also have access for folks working on the site, moving cars into one of those overhead doors. I don't think you want customers to be anywhere near that. So that's, most of my comments have to do with reconfiguring parking, and then also looking at some of the storage parking, which probably will only be managed by staff, and suggesting, as I've seen on other automobile yards, that there's the possibility for the vehicle storage areas to either be dirt or possibly seeded and planted. It's, you know, the plants are typically a hardy mix, and they can park cars there or not, and it'll make the site a little better in terms of appearance and stormwater absorption. So a lot of recommendations about reconfiguring the parking and access. And regarding SEACR, it's possible this is a type-two action and won't need SEACR review, but I haven't discussed that with Bruce, and he does most of the EAF form review. So those are my main things. It's not ready for any planning board action, and hopefully we'll get lots of answers.
I'm just trying to figure out a way that they don't have to do all this analysis for this metal storage tank underneath the, you know, just for the change of use, because the applicant is a lessee instead of the owner. I just really would like to somehow make it a simpler change of use than going for, you know, we're going for full site plan, and we're asking what's inside, what's the tank, monitoring wells, and I'm just got a concern that all these evaluations is going to stop the, this company going into that space. And we don't want to stop business in this town. So I just don't know how to get through this without burdening the applicant so much on a change of use from a rental facility that had repair to a mechanic shop that has repair. And you had customers, we had, they had customers, they had storage of equipment, they're storing equipment. It's gasoline storage equipment, it's, you know, I mean, I'm trying to just go through my head of any way possible that, you know, that they don't have to go all these steps, going down wetland boundaries and everything else. I mean, these are existing spaces, and they're not, you know, I'm just trying to work through that.
I wrestled with the same thing, and, and one of the, the interesting thing is, when it comes to the storage tank and the monitoring wells, it appears as everything's been closed. DEC doesn't have an active file. It also appears that the people that are listed as the current owner are the ones that are responsible for that closure. So it may be a simple matter of the owner providing the necessary paperwork and says, here, and we can just lop that off the list. I think the other issues, it's, I'm very sympathetic, that's why I kind of looked at it. Far as I'm concerned, if we adjust the, the parking spaces, it should be good to go, because as this gentleman said, and I tried to find it, I had it in my file, if you looked at the previous aerial photograph, there was equipment and miscellaneous stuff scattered throughout that site.
Oh, yeah, all gas storage, you know, you know, I've been saying, I'm sorry, gasoline engines with the storing oil that are all sitting there, they're all...
And it could be, you know, we could simply, if we get creative enough, I believe, put a series of notes on there that says, this is what you're going to do, and we'll draw a box around it, and anything out that, if any, it's any changes, it's on the owner, and he comes back.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I'm, and that's kind of what I'm thinking, is that we just show what we're changing, where we're going to park stuff, I mean, I'm just trying to think any way to, to reduce the cost for the applicant so he can start his business, so that's all.
And Tim did a lot in there before Duranty.
Yeah.
Tim was very busy in there, I remember.
Yeah.
Personally, it was the best one.
Yeah, so we want to, so we want to see this applicant, make sure that this business is definitely restored, so.
And he appreciates that, and, you know, as I said, they were already into leasing it because the realization wasn't there that you needed to get, you know, they thought they could just move right in and start to operate. So anything that could be done to expedite this would certainly be appreciated.
Yep, so I would like, just like we made with the other applicant, please get onto it, the consultants, talk with them.
Sure. I think the less we look, the better there.
Yeah, I think less, yeah, that's exactly, they start talking, they go to the consult, they go to the consultants' meeting, talk with them, find, come to the rationale of the change of use, so that way when they come back for that next month, we can go for admin truck or something. Okay, all right, see, I'm trying to get your approval for next month, but, all right, understood, sir? Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll contact the consultants and work with them and get this.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, yeah, that way we can try to expedite this for your applicant, because we understand the burden that he's under.
Thank you.
And we don't want to lose the business.
Thank you very much. With that matter closed, Mr. Chairman, can I ask, I'm on for Kent Self Storage for a reapproval at the end of the meeting, is there any possibility you can hear that now?
Kent Self Storage, reapproval?
Yes.
It's not on the agenda, is it? Yes, it is, it's on the bottom, it's on the.
Please, do it.
Okay, yes, you can do now, you're on the agenda.
Okay, great, thank you. Good evening, Joseph Rina, representative from Principal Site Design Consultants, representing Kent Self Storage. We're in for a reapproval. The past year has been a little hectic and difficult. We had, we had an extended period of trying to get a D O T approval, which we, every time we thought we were at the finish line, they kept moving it on us. We finally have the D O T approval done, the health department approvals out of the way. The architect has three minor things that they have to address, and then I think we're ready for coming in with a, for a signature on a site plan. So we're asking for a reapproval on that so that we can bring it to a conclusion.
Thank you. Liz?
I thought we reapproved this until long ago.
I'm pretty sure, correct me if I'm wrong, my date's off, but I thought we just did a reapproval on this and that we were waiting for conditions of approval to be met. Did you, I didn't bring my folder because I thought this one was, we were just waiting for materials for conditions of approval. Vera, do you recall when we did that? I thought it was just a couple months ago.
It was in the fall that we did that.
Right, and if it was reapproval, that means you have a year to get a building permit.
Right.
So a year's not up.
Okay.
So I think that you're in good shape, and if you get to the point where you think, I mean, I don't, I haven't seen a submittal for conditions of approval, so.
Right, like I said, we're just about there.
Right.
Okay.
So, so the only thing I would say is, keep track. If it's getting close to when it would expire, let us know in advance so we can do, ask the board about doing an extension if needed.
Okay, great, thank you. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, sir.
I'm, I'm here to represent Jerry, my name is, first name is Bob Bradley. And we just got, we met with the consultants earlier, and we just got the answers back to things that our engineer had submitted. We got them back, I guess sometime this morning. The engineer is away on vacation, so basically we had asked that this just be taken off the calendar for this evening. And we'll be back when our engineer comes back.
Don't let it happen again.
Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, Best Discount Depot.
And that's just the return, right?
What?
No.
No.
Return escrow.
Yeah, this is just the return of escrow.
I guess you're up now, Liz. You could start with Best Discount Depot and, not a roll?
Well, we got to vote on returning the escrow.
I think you just need to vote to return their escrow.
Yes, we just need to know the dollar amount.
Right.
I don't know the dollar amount.
Anyone know the dollar amount? Price is Right.
$976.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Can I get a motion to ask the town board to return the escrow for Best Discount Depot of $976?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, or whatever.
Or what the actual amount is.
Or whatever the actual amount is.
After all invoices are applied.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second that.
And Hugo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
June Carlo?
Aye.
And I vote aye too.
So Below the Line?
Please.
And the first item is Holly Property, and I'll just kind of give you the quick rundown over the last month. Oh, let's see, when did we do this? We had a draft stipulation that the planning board's attorney, Jeffrey Battistoni from Vandewater, had prepared, and so Bruce and John Andrews and I took a look at that. And then I had a nice long chat with the assessor and got some details, and then we did a revised draft. I'm pretty sure, yep, revised draft, June 4, 2021? Is that really true? Hang on, I'm just making sure. Yes. And then that went out to everybody, including Mr. Bradley for the Hollies, and Jeff Battistoni and Bruce, and I think the planning board got this also. Then I had been conferring with Jeff Battistoni about if we got to the point where there was agreement that the stipulation was acceptable, what did the planning board need to do? And I spoke to both Sarah Ryan and Jeff, so at some point, when the thing is final, you'll have to take some kind of a brief seeker action. You're the only involved agency for the planning board, and then authorize the chairman to sign. We're not there yet. The town board will have to take similar action. So then today I received comments from the Holly Real Estate folks, from Mr. Bradley, and I didn't have a chance to look at it and figure out what changes, if any, we need to make. So that will be next.
Does that have to go to Jeff Battistoni again?
Jeff Battistoni was also sent this. And he was in agreement with the changes that I made. I was trying to quantify what is on the site, what's proposed, and what would be the total. And so we're working through that so that it can be an amicable stipulation for all involved. That's it.
Right. You have something to add, Bob?
Yeah, it was just up before, I'm still Bob Bradley. We, when we first submitted this back in January, I believe, we had come to a consultants' meeting, and at that point, we didn't understand what the property could hold. I believe that we have a court decision that allows us to put in 33 units, of which we don't want to go that far and put in 33 units. But we didn't really know what the property would hold, so the first stipulation that came out was for one four-unit building and for a separate house, a single-family house. And that was the stipulation that was sent to us. Since we got the stipulation, we went over it. We had the, we had test holes dug, and we had the Board of Health come out, and we did perk tests. And we've got the final from the engineer that we can put in three, three of the four, three of the four-unit buildings. We're not going to do the private house. They'll be in addition, put on one of the other cottages, but we aren't going to do it. So the, at that time, the Board of Health was out there when we did the perk holes, and that is what we're going to come forth with, a completely new plan for the consultants and for the board. The stipulation, we've gone over that, and of course, it's in, it's fine, the way it's written, we have no problem with it, but just to change the units now. And the only reason it changed is, when we first came, we were not sure about what it could support. And we were assured that we can support what it is that we want to build now. It would put a total, I believe, of 19 different units on the property, as opposed to the 33.
Okay.
So if you have any other.
And we're going to get that in a drawing, showing us the 19 units, so we just get an idea?
Yeah, we'll do all of that. It's all out to the engineer right now, and he'll, he'll submit a whole plan. We had to figure out where the septic fields would actually be, and we're okay with the Board of Health, and we're also okay with the city, because the stream runs, the outlet for Lake Carmel runs past the property. And we're outside of 100 feet away from that, so it was fine with the city. So we will submit a new plan for everything, and that's what the letter was that just got up to you. And it was actually the consultants that told us not to do this intersections, but do the entire project at once.
It makes sense.
So we decided at that point, as opposed to doing one building and another one, and then coming back at a later date, we just do everything on the property right now, and that would be it. And I believe that's in the stipulation also.
Yeah, that allows you to phase your construction, it allows you to phase your construction, you can.
Right, right, right. So that's where we are right now. So it'll be coming in, hopefully by August, if we can get the plans back. All right, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can just make one suggestion, it would help to have, if you feel like doing this, I think you've got this, a copy of the stipulation, both in Word and, so if you want to mark that up in whatever way you want, if you want to write it in pen and scan it, or if you want to Word Smith it in the Word document, and then, you know, send it back to us, because that's also a clear way to see what are the changes you're looking for. Yeah, that would be helpful.
The only changes, the only changes that we're doing right now are to the number of units. And we're doing away with the single-family house, and we're adding two more of the four-bedroom units. Also, just as a thing, just as an aside, I call the Putnam County Housing. And for housing in Putnam County, rental housing, they have 1,000 people on the waiting list. And that's why we had decided to do this originally, and to add to the stock of rental in Putnam County. So that surprised me that.
And these, are these units are going to be sold, or are they going to be rented?
Rented, it's only rentals.
Okay.
Yeah, there's seven rentals down there now, and they're always rented, and we work with Putnam County Housing.
Mixed income, because you're working with housing?
Excuse me?
Mixed income? You know, they've been doing a lot of mixed income housing?
Yeah, there's all different, there's all different groups that do this. There's one group that actually rents these, and then they put tenants in them, and what they're doing with the tenant is not really our concern. And they work it out so they can get tenants who need housing, and they take care of that. They rent the apartments, and then they have, have tenants go into them. What they charge, what they charge to that tenant or the agreement they have with the tenant is not ours.
Yep.
So it's, it is helping, kind of to knock down that thousand a little bit. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just have to add a footnote that there's been, oh, for over a decade.
State your name, please.
My name is Liz Axelson, I'm the planner. Anyway, there has been a huge shortfall of rental housing in the whole Hudson Valley region for over a decade, so.
The next item on the Below the Line is Benitez. My understanding is that's well on its way. I think it's been signed, everything's been done. I think she's just waiting for her contractor to show up. So that one is.
Simon, have you been invited to the pool party yet?
Yes, of course.
And then the only other one, I think, is Rodriguez, which we're still waiting for information, and I think he asked and is planning on being in next month, Vera? No? Okay, okay.
Thank you.
So, oh, are you sure? Okay. So Mazada, which is 52 Kent Corp, I did a review and sent out an update on the conditions of approval, and they aren't addressed, and, but many were addressed, but here's the dilemma on Kent Corp. The previously approved landscaping isn't actually shown on the plan now, so my comments all had to do with, you know, put together, put on the plan how you're going to put those things back in place. And I don't have the authority as a planning consultant to write off something that was approved by a planning board before my time. So they need to find a way to update the plan, maybe do some more plantings, not a lot, so that we can move forward and get this thing to sign. G A D F, also in the same area, they're all done, they're ready to sign. We just, I think Vera verified that there's enough escrow there to cover any forthcoming bills. And Route 52, absolutely nothing new. Kent Self Storage, as we heard tonight, they might need an extension, but hopefully they won't. And Town of Kent Mining Law, the three consultants put together an estimate, and so I guess we need to revise it, and we'll see what happens.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions? For anybody?
Nope.
Sue, Kathy, do you have any questions for us?
Nice meeting you, gentlemen.
Yeah? Can I get, sit down. Can I get a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And how do you vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Close the meeting, thank you very much, everybody.